We will call that city agreement out now to meeting the order at seven oh one P M and rise for flood allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to number three, public comments. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Perfection. All right. If you want to come up, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Maybe you just want to state your name for the record for us before you start.
Bridget Hale.
Perfect. And you're up, Bridget. Appreciate you coming.
No, I was just gonna ask, um, some of you know that I have the a brain freeze, which is the snow cone slushy truck. That's here in Green Isle, and I'm just wondering if there's any way that I can be at the ball fields or for the games or find a place to park that's closer for the kids and just to try to maybe, I don't know, help bring more kids up there or families or, you know, just do more for the community of this, so.
And then I think I do see what, um, we do have you on the agenda too.
Yes.
But yeah, we'd love to hear more about your ideas. And then what I'll do is I'll move the snow cone beverage truck up to the top of our agenda before we approve it. We're here just listening about what your thoughts are on this. So keep going. You want to do this snow cone?
Yeah, I do snow cones and slushies. I have fresh squeezed lemonade, iced coffee. I don't do any kind of meat. I don't do any kind of, you know, alcohol, Gatorade, pop. I don't do that. I'm just, you know, all kid based, I'll go Fresca's, you know, that's.
And no food.
No food, no food at all. And so just kind of like the good beverages for the, you know, those and, um, licensed, fully insured.
So just gonna answer that, uh, what license is that with the state?
Um, I have Department of Ed.
Department of Ed, okay.
Yep.
And I know the, well, your public count, but we can, we can cover that a little next. But so you're, you're just talking about that no food. Sounds like just nice beverages for the kids and adults alike at parks and possibly the ball field during games that. Excellent. We will take that into consideration and we'll address this here coming up shortly.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else here for public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to number four, approval of the agenda. We have to add flags, right? So I do have two additions, um, flags and then, um, this discussion with the council on some of the rock on the west side of town. Anybody else have any additions, corrections? I would like to move, uh, number sixteen up to, uh, just about school update for the snow cone beverage truck discussion. Well, I'm thinking so.
Take a motion to approve today's agenda with the additions and the change.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. And that carries, then we will move on to number five, approval of the consent agenda. Items A and B with the claims totaling seventy one thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars, sixty four cents.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions, um. Uh, the second item, the alpha wireless, is that the radios for the water meters? Or is that something?
Fire departments. Yeah, that's their radio programming company, uh, Mankato.
And then, uh, I think it's five, the bound tree medical. What is that?
That's fire department as well. Anything that codes one oh two is off fire department.
Okay.
Anything one zero one is the city. And we'll have to separate A and B.
Oh, yes, we will have to separate A and B. So we'll, we'll move with, uh, thank you for that. But I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty second, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All of them favor say aye. I pose same sign.
One abstain.
And one abstain. And we'll move on to the approval of our claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for May thirteen, twenty twenty five totaling seventy one thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars and sixty four cents.
I'll second. Motion second. Any further discussion? All of them favor say aye. I pose same sign. That carries. We'll move on to number six. City Attorney Jansen has the floor.
Um, I don't have a whole lot to bring to the attention of council tonight. I've been working through one of these development agreements for the E D A. Hopefully we'll get there soon. Um, so, uh, but we get the, I guess, the wide open, um, one that hopefully we got some updates coming in. We got some pushback from the bank, I guess. So we might have to make a couple changes to our proposal. Um, but sounds like that'll be coming down the pipeline here later this week. Um, as for, looks like there's a covenant on the agenda here tonight. I guess I'm not too sure what we're looking at on that. I have reviewed it. Uh, it's like, I don't know there's been a push to abolish it, or I guess what are we looking at on this particular covenant for Lake Erin Estates? You know?
I think not.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think the concern is that if nothing is done, it re, it's a auto.
Oh, that's concerned that it would renew.
Yeah, it renews itself.
So, yeah.
But so they, but how, if you abolish it, how do you go about doing that?
So, yeah, so the initial term on the covenant was for twenty years. It was put into place in two thousand and five. Um, so that twenty years is coming up in June. Um, and then it automatically will renew for another ten year period and essentially it does that until either it's abolished or modified or whatever. Uh, so this covenant is for the benefit of the property owners within the Lake Erin. I guess that development. Um, so any sort of modification or I guess the removal or abolishment of it would require the majority consent of the lot owners at this point. So I don't know if we've received any sort of push or any anything from the lot owners to do that.
In my understanding, she may have.
One contact, um, has had questions and they're just, the concern is like if they continue with it, who is the governing, um, group? I mean, who makes sure that everything is consistent or, um, the actual document is.
That it's being enforced or that it's in place. So.
Correct.
So looking at it, so there's section three point oh two, which is kind of the enforcement section of the covenant. Uh, and that lays out, so any person, uh, with a legal or equitable interest in the property subject to this, so within that development has the ability to enforce covenant and is a benefit to this kind of covenant. So that even if the city wanted to intervene and say, hey, we don't want this anymore within that development, well, it's for the benefit of those lot owners at this point, and it would take a majority of them to intervene and request that it be modified at this point or removed, or I guess. So without that, then there's not much we can do at this point. This covenant's gonna run with those properties.
So the developer entered into the covenant with the future property homeowners at the time. And it's up to the majority, even with resale and new people moving in, it still goes.
Yeah, so it looks like as a condition of the sale to the developer, it, it's, this property was held at some point by the, the development association of the, the city. Um, and the city imposed this covenant upon it, and that was for the benefit of those lot, future lot owners. So those lot owners have the ability to modify it if they so wish down the road.
And my understanding is not all of the homeowners have signed that agreement or have ever even seen that agreement.
Well, I guess it, whether or not they know of it or have seen it, it's part of their property. It flows with the title. So I guess if they did a title search, they should have been aware of it. It's a covenant that runs with the property. So in order for that to be changed, it would take a majority consent of the property owners in that development or subject to this.
Yeah, does it outline there, um, how that majority or consent would play out? Who would, who would manage that? They, I was kind of trying to find that. Who's the, the governing authority that would say, we now have a majority of homeownership or of property owners wishing to exit the covenant?
Well, and that's the, it doesn't really weigh much of that out. So, so section three point oh one kind of lays out that declaration stuff, and that kind of lays out, um, that this declaration shall run and bind the real property described herein. Um, and be for the benefit and be enforceable by all that are subject to it. So I guess anybody could essentially do that. But yes, so it lays out that it's for a period of twenty years and then it's gonna automatically extend for successive periods of ten years unless an instrument signed by a majority of the owners at the time of uh, states otherwise.
All right. So then, um, any amendment shall not violate any zoning or other applicable, then subject to property and such amendment shall be subject to the approval if required of the city of Green Isle or such other governmental body that may have jurisdiction over such matters at the time of the proposed amendment. So after this, this June, they can't make any amendments and it will continue to renew as it is in increments of ten forever.
Yeah, that's how I read it. Yeah.
Want to make sure. I just, I'm questioning like where, where would they, if one resident comes forth and states, I want to start just here the majority. That's where I'm confused with the recorder, county recorder, nor or how do you even start that application process? What's, what's considered in writing that, like a request to leave the covenant?
And it's, it's not the clearest.
Yeah, I'm just confused. Yeah.
It notes in there that it, this declaration may be amended at any time during the first twenty year period, uh, by all owners. Um, I think there certainly could be an argument that after that first twenty years, it's, it's gonna automatically renew every ten years, but I think there may be an argument that with the consent of the majority after that first twenty, um, that they could apply for it. Now it's questionable whether or not they'd have to wait for that ten year period.
You're right.
So I think that that would be a question to cross down the road, but.
Okay.
So this covenant for the Lake Erin Estates, that would include this new housing development too that Sherratt Anclay wants to put in, or it's just the ones that are there now? So the ones that Miller Homes put up this past winter, that is considered part of this then too?
No, it's, yeah, the, the lots that are listed in here and the blocks, they wouldn't, they would all fall under that. I think it's just the, the original homes that were put up there at the time.
Okay.
And, yeah, they did include fault lots. So yeah, it's, it's interesting. I, I never had to deal with one of these and that's, that's where I get confused because if somebody's in violation of the covenant, I assume it just go to civil court, right?
Okay. But it, it would be upon the, I guess it's for the benefit of those lot owners, uh, so any of them could, I guess, bring a suit to enforce the covenant.
Okay.
Against, I guess, their neighbors. Um, but that, that would be a civil suit for them to bring.
That helps for that homeowner that's questioning. I think that's really good for us to know too. Yeah, thank you so much.
And then that, that kind of brings us to the charter. Um, so we have a draft development agreement, uh, in place. So that, that's in front of charter's attorney at this point. So we're just kind of waiting on their response. I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit more back and forth and hopefully we can nail down something here soon. And keep that moving along. But, uh, any other questions for me?
The shard one sitting with their attorney, we think what, maybe like another week? I'm sure you might have a little more of your update on that. I don't think there's nothing really.
Now, real quick, actually, um, I talked to them. They are looking at, um, hoping to have it back on the E D A agenda for the June meeting. So I do expect to see something back soon.
Progress. Anything else for City Attorney Jansen?
On that covenant?
There would have been public comment. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you live in the covenant? Wait, we're past public comment. I'm sorry. We didn't catch up after.
So it's up to the homeowners in that
Yes, yep.
Phase one.
All of it.
Force it and absorb legal fees?
Yes.
Correct. So it's for the benefit of the lot owners at this point. So they're the ones that are responsible to enforce it and.
Anything else for City Attorney Jansen? Real good. Excellent. We will move on to snow cone and beverage truck for council discussion here as well. We guys think, the only thing I, I have initial questions about is the concessions. I know historically somebody manages concessions during the baseball games. I think that's the Lions Club or maybe the association. I guess I'm not too familiar how that works. They stock the concessions, they sell them. It's nonprofit. But I see no issue with it being put up at any other park. Um, unless there's some planning and zoning concern there, I don't think of anything offhand that, yes.
I don't think there's that big of a concern with the ball field as long as you ask them because they're not selling the same things the ball field is.
Right.
For the concession. So there shouldn't be really
I wouldn't think so.
Type of conflict there.
Are we, I, I guess I don't have it. And I, I could certainly find it, uh, but is there a permit process in place that we would require? I don't, I mean, is this like a food truck or a?
Beverage truck.
So I, I have a trailer.
But yes, I, I know we looked at that in the past. We'll do a quick run for it, run through it as well. Make sure that they're putting in for the permits. Even thinking of the fee schedule that's not in there, probably something we should entertain in the future just to make sure that, that we're make validating insurance and, um, agricultural licenses.
Peddler's permit.
Peddler's permit.
You would issue for it?
No, that would be, that would have fun.
Do you have to issue that every time or seeing she wants to go there more than once? Do you have to issue a permit for it every time she goes there? Or is it just like a one time shop thing? It's good for?
We, we can do it for the whole time if she puts a date span, right?
Yeah, I, I would think and Amy's giving me the yes. And I, I think a lot of this, you know, we'd have to see what our ordinance says as well, but it doesn't sound like we have much of an ordinance for it. No.
There was one when they did the food trucks out here, even though it was long pole, they still had to have a peddler's permit, even though they're parked. It's not a house styles thing. You just have to have one.
That was first because one of those talks about last year, we didn't have to have one. Mines, do they have them when they park up? Well, that's private property though.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if I find private property, then I would have to.
And, and that's, I, I wouldn't, if, if we don't have an ordinance, um, I guess regulating it, I, I think I, I can't imagine we would be requiring it. I can certainly dig into the permitting stuff. And it may be something down the road we want to adjust if we don't have one in place.
Yeah, I would agree. We should look at it. If you wouldn't mind doing a, doing a run through on that and just, just seeing, but, you know, I wouldn't. My, my only concern would be just, just the insurance piece and a copy of license in case anybody questions it. Yes, you have it. And I'm sure you're more than willing to provide that to Diane. Right. I'm sure you did, yeah. And I, I don't know if, is there certain dates or you just whenever you can, you'll have it set up?
Yeah, so you know, I do a lot.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's just, you know, it's gonna rain, yeah, obviously.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be like every ball game. You know?
Ball game, Veterans Park, that would be a, a great spot for it. There's a nice playground area and downhill park here, quite a bad action school park. But yeah, I'm just trying to think of, of letting people know if it's out there as well, unless you have a wonderful, uh, ice cream truck sound. You could just sing, you could sing out the window.
Trailer sounds for itself. If you ever see it, it's, they can see it from a couple of blocks.
Oh, I bet.
So it's, you know, they know when I'm there, you know?
Right. I think it'd be fun for the kids.
That's what it's all for. It's just for the, you know what I mean? And so I just.
Yeah, thank you. My opinion is not impeding traffic. She's following all rules, regulations. City Attorney Jansen's gonna look at the permit, then can work with her on that. We're gonna copy the insurance license. Anybody contest to that at all?
As long as we're looking into the process.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we need to, we need to look into that. I, I agree a hundred percent, especially if a food truck were to want to come into town, I want to make sure everything's cultured there.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's another question.
Yes, um, so is it, um, another option to, I guess, either, I mean, you know, you can park down by the ball field or the school, is that part, you know, like black driveway that's on the, this side of the ball field? So I'm not in the ball field.
Oh, sure.
You know, that's just right up there, you know, which I'm talking about where the trash can is on the back side of that.
We would have to run that by the E D A.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah. But we can.
That's on the east side of the building.
East side of the building, yeah.
So are we talking like setting up on city property is what you want to do? Yes, so I guess if that's E D A property, you know, we'd have to modify them, um, to get their consent, or if it's on city property, and we'd have to give running business through city property, I probably wouldn't advise it, um, unless we got some regulations in place how we're gonna do that. Um, and it doesn't sound like we do at some point.
And I don't use any electricity, you know, I have my own generator and stuff, so it's not like I'm using anything else. I'm just saying, you know, no electricity, I need to be, so I need a home generator. I mean, I don't mind parking in the ball field, park lot, that's city property. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to stay away from the rules. I don't want to get hit. And so.
And I think it's just, it's difficult to say if we don't have an ordinance in place on how to regulate it. Typically, that's what we have these ordinances in place and so we can said, all right, make sure that they're insured, make sure we got X, Y, and Z in place. And we vetted it, we permitted it. And then, you know, we can allow it on our property, but without that, those procedures in place by ordinance, it's I, I wouldn't advise this for the, if that could arise.
Yeah, what if, for, for the interim, a peddler permit application at that point, would that suffice with copies of insurance and she'd have to pull a peddler permit each round she were to do this until we get this figured out? Would that be?
Why? I don't know. If, if we don't have an ordinance in place to requiring the permitting. Um, I don't know how we require this permit.
I'd have to look through the peddler permit in a little more detail, but I know there was discussion of food trucks and things in the past. I know we have gone through this before.
We have a, that much comment now?
I, I could have sworn we created that last year, the year before, because we're getting concerns from citizens with people going door to door and we have, especially after the hail damages. Um, yeah, because there was a lot of concern brought forth at that point. And I, I believe we also have a line item in it for our fee schedule. Um, doesn't mean that ordinance isn't up to date because we're starting to find out an update.
I mean, what would be different since I'm in town versus other town? You know what I mean? It's, you know what I mean? Because I know like some people, since they live in that town, it's different than if you're, it's a non-resident and they have a resident. Cause I know whenever I permit through Carver to do Fleet Farm, if you're a resident, it's one thing, but if it's a non-resident, it's a different thing too. Because I'm just saying.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that would be a great thing to incorporate into our, our ordinance to get this, this solidified for us.
And I, I don't think it, you know, once I get some time to sit down and parse through the, the ordinances, I think we should be able to, if there is a peddler permit or, you know, process in place or an ordinance, we should be able to track it down, but I just don't know it off the top of my head or what that would be.
Yeah, and if, if there isn't while you're looking, then by the next meeting, I am open to creating a, a draft and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda and, and make a notice for people to look at it for draft ordinance.
Yeah.
And we can bring it forth here so that we have a process for it to follow and we can incorporate city resident, non-city resident, so that you can do what you're thinking. I think it's a great idea. I, I think that might be our best route to take. Come back with a draft next council meeting.
So table it till next council meeting?
Table to the next council.
What you're thinking.
If we're not, we don't have the ordinance and he needs, yeah, because City Attorney Jansen's gonna dig through that peddler one. Unless we find out, then we'll be in touch on that peddler permit thing.
And that's just for if I park on city property, but not private property, correct?
Correct.
And i- if we do got an ordinance in place, it would regulate essentially within the city limits. So if there is one in place, it, even if it's on, I guess, private or public property, it would still have to be permitted if it's in city limits.
And would you guys have like a sticker or something? So that way, I'm just saying, so if somebody else decides to park their own private, I know that they pay the same thing that I have.
We'll figure it out because we want it to be fair and uniform. We want it to be fair and uniform and that, that if, if that's what, does Carver do that for theirs? For instance, do they, does Carver give a sticker out at Fleet Farm?
What I do don't in Mankato.
Okay.
Then they have one. We have a sticker that has the date on it. So that way they know that they, because they actually come in, the fire guy looks at the trailer, make sure that it's fire ready.
Yep.
You know, because you have to have obviously certain things for vents and stuff. I don't have vents because I do ice. So I don't need that. But, um, but yeah, they give out a sticker. That's, that way, and it, and it has to be visible on the outside of a trailer. You know, so we put on the menu board. So that way anybody that comes by knows that the city knows that I'm here and I was approved by the city.
Yeah, no, I, I like that idea. I'll come back to the council then with, with that, we'll add it to the agenda. To look at a permitting process for, might as well cover both, uh, those food and beverage trucks. No, let's recall it. I'll, I'll look at city examples and then bring it forth to the council.
And now is that also gonna be for your music in the parks too? Because they will be, they're selling food there too, so they have to permit to sell food at the correct, cuz it's still selling, so they're still peddling.
The music at the park, uh Lions Club truck or things like that, well, cuz I know the.
Set up tables and sell food, so they would have to permit also, right, so even.
I don't know, that'd be a nonprofit city sponsored event, I'm not sure I can dig into that as well. But like I said, yeah, we wanna be fair for everybody with it.
Well, I'm just saying that way, if I happen to be asked
Right.
to be parked up in months, would I have to permit for it, but you know what I mean?
Right.
I just wanna make sure I'm doing things right, too.
And maybe me have, yeah, do we have any idea?
I just found the ordinance.
Okay, I I could have something in place.
It's it's an older one.
Yeah.
You know, wh- what is the ordinance number I can find?
Seven. I think it's a seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight?
It's either twenty-eight or seventy-eight.
So one of those.
It's an old one.
Oh, updated, good time for an update, then. I'm finding a lot of things like that, I like it, it's good to update.
And I know I've worked with some other cities that have recently updated these particular ordinances, twenty-eight, it's twenty, it's a two. And so there's definitely some models out there if we wanna update this, uh particularly with the Legum Minnesota city side, so I don't think it's gonna be very hard if.
Yeah, cuz even if I go into Waconia, I don't pay, I don't have to pay anything as long as it's not on city property. Hutchinson is the same way, I don't have to pay anything unless it's on city property. You know what I mean, so, but yet, whenever I go into Mankato, and they only allow like Mankato has a double, uh, it's a two type of permit, one permit is called a food hub.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one is, they're only, like at food farm, you're only allowed two, two food vendors at the place, and then if there's any more than two, they have to buy a hub permit, and they have a food hub, and then that's the real one.
That sounds like government red tape, we're gonna make it easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I'm not a fan of that kind of thing, we we just wanna make sure insurance and and that we are fair to everybody when it comes to the process, so yeah, we'll we'll add that, I can work with City Attorney Jansen. Um, fine tune it, I guess, together back and forth, and I'll update the council at the next meeting, we'll add it to the agenda, so it's known.
Yeah, I I I just was able to pull it up, but so it's this, I think it's twenty-eight. But it looks like it dates back to November fourth of nineteen twenty-nine. So, I think we're.
A food wagon.
This is always.
We we may wanna update. But unless we got something that's more recent, which.
And you'll see, I'll still do some digging, but that will get us, that will get us progress, and we'll we'll work together, I appreciate you bringing this up.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to, if we are now at school update. Want me to have the floor of that one?
I'm gonna go first.
You go first, wait, yeah, no, have fun, yes.
The last update we gave, but mine is sort of just a little.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Uh, just that wanted to let you know that somebody is touring the school tomorrow, interested in buying it. Uh, they did have to notify me because it is still E D A property, it has not been foreclosed yet. Um, I did give the bank permission to show it tomorrow, so it will be shown to a potential buyer tomorrow.
Excellent. I know City Attorney Jansen had the the initial email following, everybody in public's aware too, we had a negotiation meeting with the bank, and I think the numbers were so far off from each other that it just would not make any sense, uh, we did offer a sum for to do a deed in lieu of foreclosure, and we felt it was a fair amount based on the state average, that was, it truly was fair and equitable for both parties, they still have the two industrial lots from the E D A, they would um, get the full gym back, and then half the baseball field is all the city's interested in in securing. Um, and our offer on that was denied, and then later on during the meeting, I was we were instructed to, well, put it in writing for, since you're saying it's a park and zoned a park, and probably would never change from a park, um, to email Taylor at the bank, at which point the individual would reach out to the board, we did just that, outlining the summary of our conversation with the offer. I would say within hours, a response came back that we already talked about this, we declined the offer, I see no reason to meet on the next day, that we are scheduled to have our second negotiation meeting for an update. And so, I know working with the E D A, talking with council, i- if we were to take over those payments for the E D A bond, and I think Abdo referenced almost twenty percent tax rate increase, or we could let this go, and so I informed Taylor at the bank, let's move forward with foreclosure proceedings because those numbers are too far apart, let us know where you want us to put the keys, and we are happy to share any contacts for the boiler, elevator, et cetera. So, we're moving on with the foreclosure process, unless City Attorney Jansen has any more information on that, that's just summary of it, bank has not reached out since.
And it's my understanding that they in formulating, I guess, their offer, I think where their offer was approximately.
One point two million, but they also appraised the entire park because, well, what would you do with the half the baseball field, how would we get that appraised? And I and I agree, it's a challenging one, but it is a park, so.
And it it's, and yeah, I think they they appraised it at one point two for that entire property, then for the E D A property, which is essentially the portion of the outfield of the ball field, but they appraised it as well as the city property, which is the majority of the infrastructure of the ball field, and they came up with that one point two, and I think what did they offer, I think it was like half, they wanted half of it, so I approximately half a million for on this portion of the outfield, which is seems a little out of line when you consider that they wouldn't even be able to develop it, and it's zoned as a park. So it's not like they could just turn around and turn this into a parking lot or something.
I mean, the only thing I think they could do is apply for a permit to put up a a chain link fence at a certain height, um, diagonal across the ball field, that that would be all they can do with the property.
And I I think that they see the, you know, if they dig their feet in, yeah, they can put up that fence and essentially render the ball field.
Wouldn't be good for their business.
Useless.
Wouldn't be a good reputation, though.
So I I think that this, that's kinda where we're, we gotta, you know, figure out, hopefully, we can come to a better resolution here. Um, because, yeah, it's, you know, we keep going down this path, and they foreclose on it, you know, that's property, that portion is theirs, if they do put up that fence, it's
Mm-hmm.
um, there's not much use to that ball field, so I hopefully there can be a resolution, but.
Yeah, I just can't, just by spending five hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money on half of a baseball field that's zoned a park, nor do they have a valuation at that, it's, it is a park that would never be rezoned from a park. Um, it it's it's just extremely unfortunate, I was really hoping for a good partnership, great communication between the two of the city, had a reasonable offer based on the state average of just land you can't build on, that's that's what we offered, and I think the acreage is like four point something, four point two acres, and we would pay the cost of the surveying of it too, and make it whole again, so that the city park is whole, everything else that that was on this E D A bond would then become theirs, cuz it is, I don't wanna keep paying three hundred dollars every few weeks for a boiler maintenance, if they're not willing to work with us, nor do I think we should keep maintaining garbage or energy into the building, now that summer months have, yeah, I I recommend that we start pushing forth this foreclosure process. It's been two weeks, I think, can, is that the one it's been since I let you know?
Yeah, I think it was, it was two weeks since the email chain went.
Yeah, and I haven't heard a peep, unless you have, and I know, um, City Clerk Treasurer has not, so we've been nothing from E D A Director.
The visit.
Yeah, so I don't know if they're waiting for these, the E D A update, and then uh City Council today, but I I really struggle with the fact of of many residents and taxpayers in town wanting us to go higher than offering uh two thousand two hundred dollars an acre of of what we offered for land that you can't build on ever.
And do we have, has the E D A received any sort of notice of foreclosure or anything of that nature?
No. Anything come here, no.
So I I don't know. And I, you know, I I guess, yeah, certainly they can provide a formal offer, um, and ultimately, I guess, the the city as a whole can consider it, um, I think that this.
Well, he canceled the meeting, so we were gonna meet that that week, and and he stated that we declined that offer, I see no need for us to meet, and we canceled it, and there's been nothing since, and my yeah, I'm I'm always open to your 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 guidance and recommendations to get this done, but at the same time, I think that it'd be nice to not be responsible for that school building anymore, and say, bank, start the foreclosure process, cuz we don't wanna mess with the boiler, we don't want the liabilities of any of it anymore. Have the have the, here's the keys, cuz I'm sure it's getting dirty in there, I'm sure the boiler is gonna need a lot of work if it keeps getting untouched, and I don't think it's I I just feel at this point, we've waited and gone back and forth, we made a reasonable attempt to negotiate, and I hope that they would come back with an offer, but at the same time, I would really like to drop off those keys pending their offer.
And I I certainly think it would be it'd be worthwhile, um, to get a formal offer from them. Um, presented to the council, the council can, I guess, weigh that. Um, I don't think that the E D A is in a position to I don't think they got the funds to make any sort of you know, I guess, commitment of that nature. So, but.
I would love to see a a formal offer, but we've we've complied by offering putting our offer in writing at at the bank's request, and the literal answer was no. And so, I I don't, I I don't like the fact of then reaching out, can you give us an offer, cuz quite frankly, I don't see any of us changing that price. But I I I just don't, like, I really, really don't. I I can't picture us using, I'd rather fix streets and roads, and maybe buy it from an auction later. Cuz we looked, we had that realtor come out here, we looked at school buildings of similar size, age, value, I think one sold for what, a couple hundred bucks if that? Uh, one never sold, I think the highest price was eighty thousand dollars, and that one was probably in a little bit better of a shape of shape. Uh, the really knowing value in that property is that bus garage, which is unfortunate, cuz Lions Club did a lot of work and volunteering to make that that a nice commercial uh refrigeration place for their fundraising efforts, that's the only value I I see in that land. You're welcome to speak up on it too, unless you just agree, but I I don't know what else to do with it.
What was the city's appraisal?
Don't, well, that, well, yeah, I don't know what else to do with it, no.
Yeah, I agree, just kinda walk away. No amount of money's gonna do it. Really, I think it's, we're not, we're on taxpayer money, and there's there's a lot of opposition already, so I believe we gotta take this wrong.
Yeah, and to refresh everybody's memory, the the E D A paid to have an appraisal done, just like the bank did. The E D A worked extremely hard to inform our appraiser that this will be half of a ball field and half of a gym, that is the land that that we want to praise, and the appraiser that we had, um, he's so used to doing residential commercial lots, and couldn't quite get it right, he he was quoting everything as its potential value, you know, but it's like, well, we're the we're the city, so it it's zoned as a park, so there's really no value in it outside of unbilledable land. Right, so the the appraisal was a little weird, um, and then, of course, it only really matters what our appraised value was, because the bank enforced and did the whole field, and the gym, I think they did the gym as part of that, so yeah, that's the of the whole baseball field, and everything was one point two million.
And it, yeah, I I think it's worth considering, yeah, it's one point two, and and yeah, that's the for the whole ball field, and I believe that that would include that portion of the gym that was a part of that land.
Yeah.
Um, so when you know, we would, all we would want is that small portion of the outfield, but yeah, so so if if it's the and yeah, if if what they were requesting was approximately half a million dollars, um, and I don't, I don't think we ever got a formal, uh, you know, letter offer or anything of that nature, but I think there was just discussions, and that's where they were at. And then they cut off, I guess, future discussions on it, um.
Yeah, we got thrown into the, it's a mess.
And I think it's also worth considering, the, I think the E D A has already thrown in approximately with seventy thousand dollars in rentals.
Mm-hmm.
Or lease or bond payments in those six months.
Boiler work constantly, three hundred dollars, this, the 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 we've been putting forth to ensure that the boiler is up to code and and operating per state law, so yeah, it's, we're at a point now, it's I don't know, what would be our next step, can, except I I an offer may come down the road, I think I think we've been clear, like, here's our offer, it's a bank, they know how to counter offer if they want to, uh, but I'd really like to just not have that that billing be part of our issue anymore. And then we can reconvene and and maybe get it at an foreclosure auction, if they wanna try to sell it for one point two million, they certainly can have that as their minimum bid.
Yeah, I.
Even a foreclosure auction, where is that bottom line?
I can, they could, they can set the rate of of minimum bid on it.
If we're into fifty, sixty thousand, I ain't gonna work either, I mean, the lowest numbers I've ever hearing.
Hmm, yeah.
We're not gonna throw that kind of money back in, I just don't see taxpayer.
The bank has been good over the years, I I I truly and honestly hope that they look at a big picture for the city, for a long-term partnership, and maybe come back with a counter offer that that's reasonable. Even even then, I I still, again, a counter would definitely have to be about two thousand two hundred and one dollars, cuz I don't see any of us changing that. Especially for our current budget and funds that we have available for that, I'd rather focus on streets.
And I I certainly I certainly wouldn't recommend the, this, you know, let's throw our hands in the air, cut off talks, yeah. I think, you know, there's certainly that benefit of having the ball field in place, um, you don't just want all that infrastructure to go.
Right.
You know, out the window. Um, so if there's a reasonable middle ground, I think it's worth pursuing it, but you know, if their middle ground is
But if the middle, no, it's taking three, four months, cuz look how long it took them to even do a middle ground for an appraisal.
They got us through the winters, yeah.
They didn't, they weren't, they're not in any big hurry to do anything about it. Cuz they don't want the burden about the upkeep anyways, either.
But yes, good, I agree, I would love to leave the doors open for them to reach back out and and say yes or no again, formally, would be ideal. But, pun intended, the ball is literally in their court. So, I don't know what else to do there. So, we just wait for a foreclosure letter to come, is that kind of the next steps or an offer?
Yes, the the ball, like like you said, is in their court, whether they're going to go down this foreclosure route, whether they whether they wanna provide an offer here, um, and I know that they kinda you know, that they've had ongoing discussions with the E D A, with the city, um, and you've got to know, you know, what they're thinking, they know they're they're thinking about just over half a million dollars. Um.
Even if two hundred and fifty, they they divide that down, I, yeah.
And I I guess, you know, it sure sounds like there's, you know, unless the council's got a different idea here, um, sure doesn't sound like the council's willing to throw down a half million dollars offer for this.
No, and and this is all uncharted territory, I think, for for this council, would we would it be wise for us so that that the bank is aware too, to make a motion to um move forward with foreclosure proceedings on that property, so it's on the record at this point?
Yeah, and ultimately, I think it, you know, this this. Yeah, and, and ultimately, I think it, you know, this, this decision would have come from. The council, how we want to proceed on, you know, next steps. Um, you know, proceeding with foreclosure, I, I don't think there's really any action.
We don't have, yeah.
It's, you know, that, that's kind of on the bank, um. You know, i- if our decision, the council's decision is to simply do nothing, well, I don't think we really got to take much of an action at this point.
Excellent.
If the council's directive is to reopen negotiations, I, I think that that's. In the prerogative and the ability of the council to make a motion to do that. Um, so I, I guess I. Would defer to how, how the council wants to.
You're saying the ball is back in our court, pun intended again.
Well, to a limited degree.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so I mean, I, I'm always open to them coming back. I, I hope they do and, and accept the offer. So I don't want to, um, close negotiation abilities, right? I, I, but I do want to make it very clear on the record that. We're not gonna be come fall paying for boiler maintenance and lights and keeping all that on anymore. I don't, I don't see the need to maintain electricity, internet. And that includes the alarms at that building. I would like to really discontinue insurance on the facility through League of Minnesota Cities and they can hold insurance on the property once this is done. That's, those are the big questions up in the air and. I will patiently wait with our negotiation team.
No, I think eventually it's gonna have to be privately owned. That's just my view of it, where.
It could be.
We negotiate with the other half of that baseball, if somebody wants to buy the whole thing as it, we wash our hands off of everything.
And, and it's, and it's.
Saying that's, but that would free us from a lot of things.
And it, it's certainly an interesting position because, yeah, this is. E D A property that we're, you know, we're talking about here right now that is at risk of foreclosure, um, but. It certainly does impact city property as.
Yep, it's an answer, you know.
It's gonna impact the city asset.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So, I, I guess if the, the council, you know, if they have an offer that they want to. Throw out or a directive or something, but if there's nothing that we want to do, I guess there's no action we need to take at this point.
Yeah, we're not telling the operator, we said what we had to say and. You know, it's just, I feel like just.
Amy, do you recall what the, I'm gonna pull that up. Do you recall what the offer I provided them initially was? Here was twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred dollars an acre.
Acre, alright.
And it was, how many acres is that?
It had four.
It was a little over four, I believe.
Eighty-eight hundred and then whatever the other charges are, you said surveying stuff.
Surveying and assessing fees.
So maybe somewhere around, the total is probably around ten.
So, yeah, i- if we're initially valuing it at approximately ten thousand, um, and they're coming back at a half million, that doesn't leave very much. Well, there's a lot of room for negotiating, but is that worth, you know. Coming back and, you know, the council saying, hey, let's offer them twenty thousand, you know, that.
That can come, that could be presented, I, I think, with the E D A and city council for discussion, but, yeah, I. Would the council generally just, just agree that the twenty-two hundred? An acre plus all surveying costs and, and. Um, closing and to make that, that ball field whole again and they can have everything else was fair and reasonable and probably about the highest we're gonna go unless they come back with something. In writing. As a counter and we can look at it at that point.
Consider an appraisal as agriculture, it's not leaving.
Well, not, not yet.
But I'm just saying, it's, uh, we don't know where that. It sounded like twenty-two is.
Non-built, yeah, it's non-buildable land. So. Alright, we'll, uh, we'll hold up. We'll update the council at the next meeting if we hear anything else. Unless you have any other recommendation at this point, I'll say I'll kind of wait.
Yeah, I, I, I think that unless. Given the, I guess, the council's, I guess. I guess directives through non-action at this point, we're not, we're not gonna take any further action. Um, of course, if the bank wants to continue this, uh, they certainly have that ability to come to us. With, you know, potential offers, but given that their range right now is around that half million, it sure sounds like the council doesn't. Isn't willing to go down that road.
And we'll keep the council posted and E D A posted. Uh, E D A's been updated already. With the information, so if the, the, they've pointed, uh, Amy and Mark and I to, to work with them on the negotiations. If anything changes, we'll, we'll let everybody know. And moving on to planning and zoning and E D A updates. We've probably covered quite a bit, so.
We've covered most of it. The E D A and planning and zoning are both sitting in that hurry up and wait status. We're waiting for the industrial park. Process to get going. We're also waiting for Charde Enclave to finish them, um, so that can. So that, that can be approved, Charde Enclave. The development agreement has to be approved first at E D A. And it has to come to city council where they have to approve the development agreement. And they have to approve the resolution for the tip. Which will come from Ailer's, and they did give Todd a heads up. If I could get the draft from their attorney for the resolution for the tip. So I am waiting for that. The other one for the industrial park will not come to city council. It was decided, was it the last city council meeting? It was directed that it would only go through E D A.
Correct.
Correct. So, once the E D A approves the development agreement. And signs the purchase agreement for the industrial park, then we'll just move to closing. Which I'm assuming will be at your office in.
Yep, and I've talked with Lori Molden in my office and she'll be able to facilitate all that, so we'll just be able to coordinate some times once we.
Once we, yeah, so I'll be in touch once we get closer to needing to pick that date.
Alright, anything else on?
There is one quick thing that is not E D A, well, it's kind of E D A. I was multitasking and I posted tomorrow is our first. Overleaf concert series event. It is our first acoustic event. It is at five thirty at Veterans Park. Two for the Road will be performing.
Two for the Road.
So come on over, five thirty, Veterans Park, Two for the Road. And that's our first one.
Thank you so much. And that's Bring Your Own Launcher and those picnic tables still.
There are some picnic tables over there. There is Bring Your Own Chair.
Alright, we'll move on to nine tree committee. Updates, I know. Who wants to roll that, Harrison?
I can roll that one. That one's me too. I received a call.
Yeah.
Um, from Craig Worm on that one. He was looking at removing a tree that is actually in a city easement. The, the person contacted him. And he wanted to know what, and we talked about it for a little bit and I was curious what the past, the city process was when there's a tree in an easement. Has the city paid for that in the past? Has the city paid for half? I think we should be consistent. Uh, if it, is it the homeowner's responsibility? Is it a fifty-fifty split? Does the city take trees out of easements?
Did they plant it?
This has probably been there for a while.
Yeah, I guess I don't know. That's the question, planted it, but I mean, we could remove it to get to the lines. That's the part of the easement, but not, not general, right?
I think even if the city, because I know when we planted our stuff at our house, it kept back from. Out of the easements, but I believe the city has every right to just trim stuff up if it happens.
Yes, they can trim in there.
But I don't know where the costs.
We have a great city attorney.
Yeah.
I, I suspect that would fall on the property owners to maintain, I guess, their property unless, you know, we get, what, what sort of an easement is it? Is it like a utility easement?
A utility easement back there.
If this were like a. A pathway, you know, I, I think that'd be.
It's the alley, I believe, too, behind the.
If it's not impeding a utility line, it's not, right? It's not getting anything. It's not a danger to.
It is, I asked about that apparently. It's dying, so parts of it are starting to fall down, which could cause a. Safety concerns.
Is this, and so is this in? Like the city right of way or anything? It's just.
What I, well, I don't have a copy of all of the. Easements or right of ways in the backyards that have been recorded, they've been recorded at the county. Oftentimes, some of those have been recorded at the county. So I don't know.
I know the G I S portal. Goes right over that tree of the, the ownership of that property owner. So I mean, it's, it's like not covering the city street growing in the alley. It's a tree that's standing on the resident's property. The easement is if we need to access it for anything. It's the thing, thing I'm looking at, I guess.
And that's what I, you know, if it's in the city right of way, um, yeah, it's gonna be on us. Um, but I think if it's purely on their property and it's just.
Just an easement.
Easement, a utility easement, I suspect that that's gonna fall on the property owner to maintain that.
Okay, so. Just consensus from the city council then, giving direction that it is, I guess, for all event easements. So if this question comes up in the future, anytime it's in an easement backyard by an alley, it is the property owner's responsibility. I will have that in minutes.
And, uh, unless we've done it differently in the past, I guess I haven't seen anything.
There would be anything in the. Regulations or.
Be, yeah, except for utility easement. I mean, you, the easement exit is still the homeowner's property. It's just so that we, we, the city has access or utilities have access when they need it. So I mean, it, historically, Excel will do trimming, but they're, they're doing the tree trimming along an easement because they're accessing the utilities. Uh, uh, so I mean, they're not, they'll only cut down the tree if it's impeding their utilities, like city attorney's saying.
But it's still six feet wide, controlled by the city.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I, I guess I, I, I would. Love to help, but we'd have to help everybody's trees on easements that are there. We don't know if they were legally planted there. I know the city usually doesn't plant on an easement. Trees unless it's, yeah, so I, I just, I started with that. We have to be fair to everybody and I.
And that's what I would suspect, you know, if this were impeding the right of way or impeding, you know, the alley, um. I think that's a little different, but if this is just purely. The utility easement going across their yard.
Well, for instance, mine, trees, I took a bolt down on my cost, but five feet away is easement and I was right on it, so I thought it was my obligation, so I mean.
That, that's how I would suspect, um, unless we've been doing it differently, I can't, I can't imagine we have.
Maybe a, a limb, if it's hitting vehicles when somebody's driving by and maybe the homeowner refused to cut it. I remember something along the lines like that.
Just to cut it, trim on a branch, trimmed it down.
Just to help out, some people's vehicles aren't getting scratched, but I think that's been about it. So the council majority, unless anybody disagrees.
Amy, was there a discussion about this tree? In the high lines, the wires?
That, no, I didn't hear anything about that.
Okay.
Because if it's in the wires.
That's an Excel.
That's an Excel, exactly, and that's part of.
It's on them.
Okay.
Trimming it up for itself, because that's the. They, they don't care if you're, what you're, when you put your tree, they're gonna cut it down if it's gonna bother.
Excel would.
Yeah.
They may already party.
And that's what, right, and that's where the concern is.
I understand.
I believe on this particular tree.
And I understand it.
Anything, yeah, they didn't, they didn't share that with me, but if that is a concern, they should call it some energy, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I still say if that tree is sitting on the homeowners and it's hanging over that alley. I think it's a cost to that homeowner to take their branches down. Trim it up or take it off. And if you're just trying to clear an alley, trying to get through it, I mean.
But we have to find out if the wires, if it's on an Excel.
Right.
If it's Excel, then. You're not, you can't.
Yeah, they won't take it.
They won't. They have to be notified and it may take them a few months to take it out or come and look at it, but.
So maybe that helps send a consensus for this, for the tree committee, is that the, the city council typically is not. Um, paid for the removal or even half the removal of trees on easements. It's simply for utility access, et cetera. So any responsibility of cutting those trees down. Is up to the property owner. If it is hitting a line or there's concern about a utility, contact the utility provider, report it and hopefully they'll take care of it. Same would apply if it was messing with our water line, let us know. That answer it, you're golden with that one?
It does, and that just, that would be good education information for the tree committee. To put out either in a newsletter or whatever form, I guess, you know, you plant something in an easement.
Right, yeah. I, I know we've had people years ago, um, actually have to remove a tree in an easement they planted. The city, the city had requested that. That was years before me, but that was my lesson learned of, of watching it. Don't do that. It's not a good thing.
So.
Thank you. Move on to ten, unless you had anything else you're holding?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Arbor Day was a couple weeks, weekends ago. I wasn't there, but you were saying it was a good discuss.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes, we're, yep, Arbor Day, we did the second annual proclamation for that. And planted two donated trees, um, next door at Hope Garden to kick that off, which is funded by all, it's all donor funded. And so if anybody asks about watering up said tree, I do have it on an automatic timer. And it will skip days where it's going to rain. So if anybody's asking, are the trees getting watered? Yes, they are. They water at the same time every day with a rain delay. They're a little bit in shock, but I think they're doing really good. They seem to be.
Still waiting on our tree city.
Yeah, yeah, I emailed her. After we talked, so after the tree, so I'll send another one. I might try a different email, because it could be with a Gmail kickback, so we'll check it out. And then park board update.
Not much this week. Um, we have a joint meeting with the C P I C committee next Tuesday and then a regular park board meeting next Wednesday.
Thank you. Number eleven budget dates.
There should be something impacted.
Yeah.
So everybody wants to take a look at your budget calendar for twenty twenty-six budgeting, which has come, will begin in June. June thirteenth. Going crazy there. And did you want anything else to add on that? And.
Well, I think there's a page two that talks about the dates. That Abdo would like to meet with council.
Okay. Everybody pretty familiar with their calendar right now to kick off our budgeting?
And if we have to wait till the next meeting, that's fine for everyone to.
Yeah, let's do that. So if the council wants to take those July, look at your, bringing those beast home so we can kick off the budget process. Uh, plenty of dates in July, so we'll count on one of those in July. We'll add that to our agenda for the next meeting to select our official date.
And that meeting, we would like to start at six, if that works for everybody.
Which July one?
Uh, take it home, yeah, I mean, look at, unless you know right now.
June seventeenth, I won't be here.
So we will, well, that's not a date.
That's not a date.
You're golden. You're in luck. Are you here the sixties?
Of July.
Um, I'll, I'll have to look at my other calendar too, but I will add this to the agenda if everybody wants to take a look at that July. I can even say, have Diane send out a, a doodle poll. I'm familiar with those, just emails you. Vote on the day that works best. Now they will, we'll get something scheduled for our first official and we'll announce it at the next council meeting.
Oh, you're gonna start a date and then work our own.
Yeah, yeah, for me, it's flexible, I think. Yeah, I know, that would be great. And then twelve, tree rule, a little bit, baseball park. Where do you go?
There's one bid in our bracket and they only received one bid.
And.
Because of our last discussion, what part of the baseball park is this tree removal on?
This one is actually, if I'm. Thinking correctly, it is on our side, because he, no matter, yeah, because that walking path area too, right, Amy? The, the path area. It's near there, it's so that they can do the insurance work, but yeah, we should really move forward with that, yeah.
They have to have it removed.
Yeah, the claim's in place to fix those lights. And, yeah, we have a bid, covers grind stump, cleanup grinding, still. And yeah, we have a bid, covers grind stump, cleanup grinding, stone hole with the back dirt, does not include grass, cedar sod. So we don't need to worry about that, but we at least take care of that tree piece and and have that as part of the existing claim. So we did not receive any other tree bid for that, correct? They said, all right. Uh, I will make a motion to move forward with final property solutions LLC for a tree removal.
I'll second.
All right, at the cost of not to exceed one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, includes stump grinding and backfill. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that carries. And next up, we're on staff review. Council had Hunter and I go ahead and meet with Diane to perform for performance review. I think it went very well, we finished that up earlier today prior to right after city hall closed and right before our council meeting. So if you didn't notice, there was a few cars here, we completed her review. I just wanna thank Diane for all the hard work, it's been an unprecedented year with a lot of things going on, the the school closure, um, but also really organizing. And it's streamlining a lot of our processes and I think that's incredible. And so she had a very good review. And any other comments on that, Hunter, you can think of at this moment?
No.
I kinda like having her here.
We still do, yeah, we're we're doing.
We do, hey, everybody likes you, I like it.
I still enjoy it.
That's what matters the most, it really does, no? You're the face of the the organization every time somebody comes in and they get to know you and it's appreciated. And Hunter and I, um, believe she is also due for a rate wage increase. Uh, I'd make a motion to provide a six percent increase to city clerk treasurers pay. On top of our our standard COLA that exists. Like the endless well with with pay around our region, so.
Well, second that.
And that will be affect, yes, thank you, motion second, and then further discussion, that would be effective the next pay period. So two weeks from yesterday. Any further discussion? You're none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That carries and thank you for another great year, Diane.
Thank you, council.
And fourteen street project. Any updates on alley between Grove and Pine?
I had a citizen approach me regarding the alley between Grove and Pine, which is the alley right behind the city office. Um, because we had looked at several streets and alleys. They felt that that alley was in worse shape than anything else in the city at this time. And wondering if we were going to be doing anything with that, I don't know if that was looked at of the street committee at all.
I haven't driven down any alleys really, so I couldn't, I don't, unless they're concerned about potholes or something.
There there are some.
Be just, might just need some gravel fill or.
It's asphalt.
Okay.
But what's that worked out, the owners took care of that?
They were assessed for that, yes.
Mm-hmm, they were assessed for it.
They were assessed for that, yes.
That was a discussion we held once about.
Yeah, it's nothing.
Asphalt, you and I were on council at the time.
What was the outcome of that, Mark, do you recall?
Oh, I know we went back and forth on it.
Cause it was offered that that you guys could, if I recall correctly, that that during this time.
Set up that thing, the first point is to go, they all chipped in, they all.
Yep.
Get it to go, so yours, why wouldn't be a city matter now?
It's a waste of maintenance of after installing this this asphalt, um, outside of the gravel that we have elsewhere. Cause it it's manageable for the city maintain, um, anything after that, maintenance of the asphalt then would be. Uh, the homeowner's responsibility if they want to continue to keep the asphalt, or we can tear it up and put in gravel. That was the last conversation, this was quite a few years ago, when we were putting all new gravel in in all the alleyways, they wanted to keep it. So that's that's how that left, um.
Could you have that same discussion with them again, if you wanted the asphalt, it might have to do what we did the last time it was fixed?
I think, I think.
Something you could maybe bring up with them?
If that's the consensus, I I think you could respond to the one person that brought it up and and inform them that, hey, we could remove that that asphalt. For a discussion many years ago, and we would gravel it and maintain the gravel at that point, but if they want to continue to have asphalt. They can build the potholes, but it it's out of shape. Yeah, it's it's in need of some work, I I would hope they'd go to gravel, I think it would last a lot longer for them, for the traffic that goes back there, heavy vehicles.
Um, you know, you got a hard surface and then you hit the potholes, yeah, it just keeps wearing them odd holes all the time. So to the one extreme or the other, right, I mean, either take it all out or.
It's probably not a decent base factor to have an asphalt alleyway anyway, with heavy vehicles driving in there, you might.
The base might not even be. Garbage trucks that ran through it earlier and destroyed it.
But I just think you have to bring it up with them and see if that's what we did many long ago was.
Okay.
As long as we're talking street projects, I got a question to ask you. Have we ever found out what the fire station was to do with the streets around the fire station, what their plans are?
Well, I think we want to run, but like I think we're talking about running on our comp brand, so kind of as far as we can stay more, so I'll get rid of that family.
So they're still working on their, they're still working on their idea of what they want back there, okay?
I think the alley is not as, the worst I think is Bravro Street right alongside of it.
Okay.
Main, that is really what they call craters or whatever, even there.
I was just wondering if they had.
And that could be part of the process, but I think we talked about doing curb and gutter.
Yep.
And that's done, and then anything else as far as seal quarter.
Yeah.
And then if we had money left, we'll do something for a street if that was.
Well, I know we were talking about letting them figure out what they wanted to do with everything back there first, I was just wondering if they have figured anything else out or they're still working on it.
Right, I think, um, we'll have to set that into our budget as far as that, um. You know, reworking that whole thing right now, so.
And while we're on the talk of all of this and and tree discussion, I gotta bring one up to city attorney Jansen, the. You may not have looked, the tree committee also had the Emerald Ash Board treatment for the the arborist that we had fired. It's it's a pretty straightforward agreement that this person would become our arborist, what he already has and apply. One treatment per year for up to six years.
One treatment every other.
Is it, oh yes, one treatment biannually up to six years. And then the cost is a set number with a a five percent leeway in case the the chemical treatments go up. And that included a total of how many trees? It was like forty, fifty three?
Three.
Hold on, we have it right.
I just wanted to make sure we took care of that because we do have, um, this interval weighting, uh, is the tree city too. We we budgeted four trees and treats, uh, streets, trees, all of this, we have a lot of Emerald Ash Board in Green Isle. And it's, we had our first look at it and it is actually a good time to put treatments on it. Because they're still salvageable for the ash trees, and so we really got to move quick on that one. I'm just gonna pull it up, so the council has the number, and then I can keep that with city attorney Jansen to review. I just wanna make sure I get the number right for the council here.
Let's think about forty trees, I did have to come that quickly, but it was like about forty trees would be treated for Emerald Ash Board. There is also the removal of. That the committee, who are our arborists?
Yep. Yeah, it's a medication plan for the Emerald Ash Board in the city of Green Isle, would cover all of that. They, I thought it may have something on it for us, I mean, I'm trying to find it, I know I did.
I posted it to your email.
You did, all right. Get this to the.
All three documents, there was the the old tree bid, the.
You're on a roll.
Yep, the cost for the Emerald Ash Board treatment and the contract.
Yeah, and and the the tree removal. Yeah, all right, let me pull this up for everybody. All right.
And the contract is short, four pages.
Yeah, and I'll get that, I I, yeah, I can show that.
You got it up right now, can you forward it to me as well?
All right. Let me know later on when you look, yeah, I'll, that was. So, but yes, it is a total of. Uh, tree rage by the radius, applications for it, so that the total, um. For us to move forward with an agreement with our already appointed L and L Tree Services, who's going to, um, be hired hopefully to. Provide medicated. I guess they call it, it's not a pesticide, I wouldn't call it that, it's a treatment that goes on the ash trees so that it's not further spreading. Because we already have trees that are starting to hollow out. Uh, financially, makes sense to get it done because tree removal, as we are seeing, is incredibly costly. And we want to make sure that we don't have to cut down trees if we don't need to. So this biannual agreement, but for this year alone, um, would be seven thousand eighty nine dollars to treat a total of. I thought you had it right on the first page for us, uh, forty nine trees. And that treatment is once every two years. And I think that very important that we get that done based on having the arborist look at it, talking to U of M. And all of them, and that would be called proposal six to eight for the, for the pesticide, it'd be probably a couple of votes for us. And I'll get that agreement to Kenny's looking over, I'd make a motion to approve, uh, moving forward with L and L Tree Services, um. For the first biannual treatment of Emerald Ash for. Medication at a total not to exceed seven thousand eighty nine dollars.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and that motion carries. And I'm gonna go to the next attachment here, one moment. And city attorney Jansen's looking at the agreement now, I didn't see anything that that looked off on that, um, and it is just a, I think it just that five percent. Piece, which I I understand, cause it's a six year term, if you were to, the pesticides cost go up, he has the ability to just adjust that that treatment by five percent. Next up is a proposal six, seven, two with our arborist. And while he was out looking at the ash trees, he did locate this one, a burrow located on hillside at the softball park. That is over here and it is in dire need to come down. And it would include, uh, yeah, it's a burrow located on the hillside at softball park, removal of the stump as well. Uh, at amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and I know that. We need to get that tree down as soon as possible and our our typical stance is that continue to move forward with with bids from as many local people or wherever as we can. Um, in this situation, we did discuss at the tree committee that moving forward, if we approve this, he's gonna be our arborist providing medication to the trees. I don't think that he should have all access to then also do all of the tree removal guaranteed. So we would consider him our arborist, you know, the tree doctor, and we would still seek bids after this elsewhere for local. Tree removal companies, landscapers, whoever wants to partake in putting in for pricing. So we, the tree committee recommended to move forward with this as well. Uh, it'd be this tree removal with removal of tree stump on the hillside at a total of one thousand two hundred and fifty two dollars. And I would make a motion to approve that.
Second that one.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and that carries. And lastly, is just our, um, Emerald Ash Border Treatment Agreement that, uh. We will have L and L Tree Services. Routinely perform the treatments biannually for our forty through forty three city trees. And, um, I would make a motion to approve moving forward with that agreement for arborist for the tree city. Tending, um, city attorney Ken Jansen's review and approval.
And I I I've enabled them.
Oh, you're on, you're on fire, yeah.
I I don't see anything too concerning in here, so I'm, I guess I'm, the the one thing I was trying to track down. So they they sent us that proposal for this year, so it was about that eight thousand. So I don't, I didn't see any here thing in here, so so they assume that it's gonna be about that five percent.
Five percent, and then you also have your radius, so it's, yeah, I think it goes by a a two inch radius would would then change the medication price maybe a little bit.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Depending on that diameter of the tree.
Yeah.
Um, so and then I'm assuming would we just, I guess, I'm trying to find it here, when will they send out that bill each go around, is that?
Uh, they'll actually send us the invoice prior to doing the treatments and in that agreement, he will all, that also includes, um. Him coming to the city council or tree committee meeting to provide updates on the status of the the health of the trees, how the treatments are going, any recommendations, et cetera. Am I missing anything on that tree committee members? I thought that was a good thing to add in there so that that we can ask more questions as we proceed, uh, and we do have an out on that agreement, sixty day written notice. So. That was my motion on the floor. There a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. And that carries. Uh, city shirt apparel. And.
There is a logo in your packet that was brought to the city office. And then requesting for the people that are mowing our lawns, they were asking if they could, um. If the city could purchase some apparel for them. They were mowing lawn. They were t-shirts, long sleeve, a tank. They just wanted to know if that was okay, or if we had approved for that, for a purchase of that. Um, they were thinking at least one and maybe two, like in the summer months, it's hotter, have a tank and then in the fall, you know, maybe a long sleeve or a two t-shirts or something like.
That would be okay, purchasing one article of clothing for, um, our city staff that are out there mowing and and getting their clothing damaged. They're not making big bucks by doing it at all, it's a, it's a wonderful service they're providing and they do great work, they're gonna wear it, right? And they have to wear it.
Yeah.
It seems to be the.
Yeah.
But I think.
But if we did two items per mower, it would be right around three hundred and fifty dollars, so.
I'm okay with the two items per mower.
Okay.
Just because, yes, I don't think I'd wanna have a long sleeve shirt and wear it in the summer and in the long, or the fall or spring.
Right, yeah, or cooler.
You're good to go on that one.
So we have a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve purchase of, uh, one attire per employee.
One or two.
Or two, what do you want, two?
Two.
Two, uh, with the Green Island Browns crew logo, it's beautiful. I think they got motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and that carries. And moving to other, I hope I can get this out of the way pretty quick for you, I only have two items. Um, the first one, uh, state flag veterans park, do we know who, past conversations, I know veterans park was funded by a lot of donations. Who's responsible for ongoing payment or or deciding what flags are flown, things like that, do we know offhand? Cause I don't think veterans park, um, I I think they exist for if they need to maybe replace a statue or something like that, is how I understand it. Uh, but flag purchasing, I I really don't know who replaces the flags and and makes that decision as to what to fly out there. Cause I know the state flag is, is no longer there and I don't know. If they're ordering one or how that works, so I would, I would recommend we just bring that forth to the parks committee if if, uh. Nobody has an idea on the council level. I think that was, the committee was formed just to get their, the funding and create veterans park. I think, I think we need some consistency with those flags and purchasing and making sure they're, they're kept in good condition and what to fly. I think that's important, so. Hunter, you don't mind that one?
Yeah, I can take it.
Thank you, sir, and then secondly, there is some, I don't know what it's called, but it's not the, there's some rock that we had left over from Patterson Sand. Fill out there, I know the city will use it occasionally for fill, they just left it there for the city. And I know we've had residents and and others ask, I wanted to see if I could have about a bobcat bucket full. And I don't know what you wanna charge me, but I, Diane didn't, what was the ongoing rate usually?
What?
I remember, but I I wanna be fair with that, I'd be, I like, yeah, I'll I'll figure a way to get out there, it'd be a couple runs with my wheelbarrow running back and forth. About that, um. But I would probably, it's just some. But I would probably, it's just some of it for a little bit of top, feel like maybe two inches, uh, of a ten by ten perimeter. I want, I know that Patterson used to be like, yeah, five bucks, but I want to at least be fair and, I don't know, twenty-five bucks sound good?
What are we, do, do we got it generally open to the public?
Yep, anybody can call and ask if they want some of that stuff, but we need to think of a price for it, like, if, if they want it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was free, it's lovely, it was abandoned there and they, and Patterson said, well, you can have it, we're not going to renew an agreement, uh, uh, but there's that three-quarter plain rock, which is good stuff, and I know people service can use that for. Um, compost site and more, yeah, but this is more that, that P rock gravel stuff that is sitting there and getting a weed.
Only if you wheel it from there.
And it has to be on video.
Yep, and video.
I, I think.
We encourage all residents, yeah, anybody's called us, we have people call on that, but go ahead.
I think we'll have to do our due diligence and price it out.
I'm okay, let me see what a average cost for a yard is quick. Because if I don't finish that shed soon, Ken. He's gonna be angry at me, I, I figured why not give it to the city if I can instead of going out of town for it. Per cubic yard. And we'll call that P gravel, I guess, I don't know where to go. So if I grab a yard, which is actually a lot, what is that?
It is a lot.
It's a lot, but I, I am happy to pay a yard price for it, but yes, we will, we're, does streets committee want to think about what the average is later on, so we can get that on the website in case somebody called and asked?
What do you got right now?
I have traditional P gravel, twenty-five dollars, actually per cubic yard. To fifty-five dollars per cubic yard for traditional, now if you were to go crush lines, limestone, that's thirty bucks a cubic yard, uh, River Rock thirty-three. And so.
Is that considered traditional?
I would assume it is, they just use it underground, I'd, I'd go thirty and even make it more than, and we can, that way it's average.
I, I think we'll have to price it out, um, and then I think generally we got to open up to the public before we. Do anything with it.
So we can't sell the residents anymore when they call in, we used to just call Patterson Sand and they'd do it, and we've had people call in to us too, we're dumb. But yes, all right, uh. We, sorry, we can't, yeah, public comment, we can chat after.
I'll chat afterwards with you.
So, yeah, we can polish it, but the thing is, it's, it's, I don't know if anybody's going to use that P gravel, but we'll wait and see. But if it's a no, legal recommendation, I'll always listen to you, Ken, so how do you want to proceed with that?
Yeah, I, I, I think we want to do our due diligence, we want to price it out, um.
And I don't want to be the one pricing it out then.
Yeah.
Because I'm making the request.
So.
And I just need one bucket, so.
We can come to.
Oh, boy.
So you got to price it up and you're gonna have fun with it, but it's got to be consistent with the, the residents, yeah, but that's why I brought it up, I didn't want benefit of us being in the street community. Do you have any comments, man, on, on people that have called before, we'll just have to tell them to wait if they do call.
And that's what I've been telling you, because we want to use it for city first, if we need it, and so we might have other projects.
Yeah, three quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the good stuff, the P gravel, I've been touched, so. Yeah, I wanted to at least bring it up to the council in public just in case, so that it's transparent, and I will have them to price it out. Give me a quote by like next week so I can finish my.
We got to get in touch with the lawyer first, we do everything.
We got to talk to the kid first, he's not going on. Got to see what the max did.
I think we have.
I just want to.
Almost everything covered, yeah, go ahead.
There's a picture in your packet of the door. And the refinished one.
It looks wonderful.
Is a thing of beauty, because we were putting a Hope Garden on the other side, and. I just wanted to let everybody know that we did approve it and it's done, completed.
Looks great, I think they did a wonderful job.
Yeah.
All right, there's nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, pose same sign.